Five. I'm gonna bring in Ms. Datt for number one.
You're on mute. I need you to name and address for the record.
Anna Sia Datt, 117 Madison Avenue in Amityville, New York.
And you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
For the record, we have a planning division memo dated May 10th, 2021. A survey by Peter J. Barbers on dated May 6th, 2017. Same survey, but it shows the pool location where it's drawn in. Tax map acting as an area map and.
And four photographs, Mr. Chairman, as well as more plans and a plot plan by Andrew S. Brom dated October 20th, 2020.
Would you like to tell us about your application?
Yes, I'm looking to install a pool with a hot tub and a deck surrounding both. This would exceed my total building area from 20% to 29%.
Okay, I'll turn the hearing over to Mrs. Quinton.
Oh, Mrs. Datt, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Okay. You want to put in, let me wrap this around my head, the pool, the hot tub and the deck together?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Okay, I really don't have any questions about you. You have enough space back there to do this. Okay, just make sure that it's in a conforming location. That's what we require. Okay, I have no questions, no more questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from the board? Does anyone like to be heard on this? Brian, we have nobody, right? Okay, we're gonna close the hearing, reserve decision, we're gonna keep the record open for one week in case there are further comments. And you will get the decision in the mail.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna bring in Jeffrey Miller and Gennaro Cosalino for application number two. I'm getting a little feedback from you, so I'm just gonna put you on mute if you need, just unmute yourself, is that all right?
Yeah.
I need name and address for the record.
Gennaro Cosalino, 2125 Deer Park Avenue, Deer Park, New York, 11729.
Jeffrey, you're gonna speak on the application?
Yes, my name is Jeffrey Miller. I live at 263 Montgomery Avenue, West Babylon, New York, 11704.
Okay, and you both affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Well, directly, we have a planning division memo dated May 10th, 2021. A survey by Bruce Morell dated 11/2018, tax map acting as an area map and.
Four photographs, Mr. Chairman, as well as a set of floor plans by Michael Angelone dated February 18th, 2020.
Would you like to tell us about the application?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Gennaro Cosalino for the homeowner Jeffrey Miller, residing at 263 Montgomery Avenue. With Babylon, also known as Section 141, Block 5, Lot 100.1, located in the C-zone. The property is in a regular corner lot with an area of 10,356 square feet. We're requesting relief from the board to construct a new 15 by 25 second-floor addition. The proposed addition requires a variance, requires variances for front yard setback. Requesting to build at 24.9 feet instead of permitted 30 feet on Montgomery Avenue, a difference of 5.1 feet. Also requesting to build at 26.5 feet instead of permitted 30 feet on Hubbard's path, a difference of 3.5 feet. Proposed addition complies with all other zoning requirements. Proposed addition will have no significant impact to the environment, not affect any of the adjacent properties, and will fit in with the character and nature of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Turn the hearing over to Ms. McCullough.
All right, um, this is already a two-story property, correct?
It's a high range, yes.
It's a high range. So you're going horizontally, you're not going up?
No, no, we're going, we're going off of the second floor, we're building off of the second floor.
Okay, um, is there a reason why we are asking for this construction? Are we trying to rent or are family growing? What's going on?
It is a growing family. I haven't, my daughter is going to be born in June and.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, and we recognize that we are going to need more room considering I already do have a toddler.
Absolutely. Okay, I'm all for that. I have no further questions.
Any other questions from the board?
Nope.
Does anyone like to be heard on this application?
Nope.
There's none. For the record, there are none. Okay, we're gonna close the hearing, reserve decision, keep the record open for one week for further comments. Thanks for coming in and, you know, you get the decision in the mail.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Good evening.
Everyone have a good night.
All right, um, this next applicant for Carly Boccolo, I can't tell who's there, but I have suspicion that is this LG Stylo 6, so I'm just gonna check. Whoever's on the, I'm assuming this is iPad or something, LG, asking you on mute, can you let me know who you're here to speak on? Or if, if any of these applications at all, it's the only one I don't recognize on this list, so figured I'd check, because I don't have Timothy Jordan here. So if that's you, Tim, let me know. Hello? Hello?
Hello?
Is that, is that you, Tim? Mr. Jordan? Are you here for application number three? He unmuted, so he actively.
Yeah, he's unmuted.
He or she actively unmuted themselves, so I'm just checking, because we'll have to skip you if not. You there? But, uh? Is Jordan? All right, let's skip him and I'll give him a ring while we're working on the next one.
Okay.
All right. All right, I'm gonna bring in Mr. Richard Hicks for application number four. I'm gonna give Tim a call just while we're working on this one. We could get started then, I will.
Yeah, okay. Richard, you're on mute. Need you to name and address for the record.
All right, good evening, everyone. Richard Hicks, 1014 North Hamilton Avenue, Lindenhurst.
Okay, and you affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Okay, for the record, we have a planning division memo dated May 10th, 2021. A survey by Michael K. Wick dated February 26th, 2021. Tax map acting as an area map and.
And six photographs, Mr. Chairman, as well as a set of pool plans by Cardinal Systems, Inc., dated March 10th, 2021. Oh, and also, sorry, a plot plan by John Bracco dated April 7th, 2021.
Would you like to tell us about the application?
Sure. I'm requesting a variance to maintain my existing roof overhang on the back of my garage. It was here when I bought the house and I'm just trying to, to maintain. And I'm also going for a variance to install an in-ground pool.
Okay. Turn the hearing over to Mr. Rigby.
Good evening, Mr. Hicks. A quick question for you. Is there a pool existing on this property or was there a pool on this property at one point?
At one point, there was a little above-ground pool, correct?
Okay, Mr. Hicks, are you gonna be putting it in the same spot or is this gonna, where is this going?
It's going in the same, same area, same location.
Okay, all right, Mr. Hicks, I have no further questions. That's a, that's a conforming location. Is it gonna be irregular-shaped, round oval?
It's gonna be a rectangle.
All right, Mr. Hicks, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I got no further questions from the board.
Wait, I have one thing. I'm sorry, Mr. Hicks, would you agree if this application was approved to not further enclose the porch or enclose anything in the back?
No, I have no future endeavors of doing such thing.
Okay, that's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna close the hearing, we're gonna reserve decision. You, we're gonna hold the record open for one week and you'll get the decision from us in the mail, okay?
Thank you, everybody. Enjoy the rest of your night.
You too, sir.
I was able, I was able to talk to Tim, he's gonna join us in a little bit, little technical difficulties. So while we're waiting, I'll bring in the next applicant, if you're up for it, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
All right, next applicant is Kelly Bennett, representing Jennifer Bruhl for application number five. Kelly's also representing the applicant for number six, so I'm gonna leave her in after this one.
Okay.
My name's Kelly Bennett, address is 1257 Udall Road, Bay Shore, New York, 11706.
Okay, and you affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Okay, for the record, we have a planning division memo dated May 10th, 2021. A survey by Michael Scholice dated February 6th, 2017, tax map acting as an area map and.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm pulling it out just now. Six photographs as well as a plot plan by Thomas Daniel Blore dated February 3rd, 2021.
Would you like to tell us about the application?
Oh, good evening, Chairman and members of the board. So I'm here tonight on behalf of Ms. Jennifer Bruhl. She is the property owner of 43 East Beach Promenade. And we're here tonight seeking some area variances, all in connection with a house raise. So this house was damaged in Sandy, so they are restoring it and repairing it, so it is part of this, you know, the sandy funding, so she isn't in a time crunch to, to provide this renovation for the house. So we are seek, currently we're seeking to increase the height from the required 30 feet to 30 feet 3 inches. Diminishing our east side side yard from 10 to 6 foot 6 and the west side from 10 to 9.2. Diminishment of total side yards from 25 to 15.8. And again, this is all in connection with the two-story, we're doing two-story front decks and then the actual raise of the whole dwelling. So they are in a high-wave impact zone, actually. So that kind of came up once we got the new survey done. And we did review the conditions and the planning board comments, and I did speak to the architect today. And he said it would be a very easy fix to change the pitch of the roof. Right now, they're, they're at a 7 and 12 pitch. So he said he could easily change that to get into the 30-foot requirement. And we can resubmit something for that. And in terms of the conditions that the decks never be further enclosed, the owner is absolutely fine with that as well.
Okay, so in that case, we're going to eliminate the first variance?
Yep, I was told it will be a very easy fix.
That's, that's fine. So I'll make a motion to eliminate variance, number one, permission to increase height from 30 to 30 feet 3 inches on application 21028.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And you will supply us with new plans, right?
Uh, yes, the architect is working on them right now.
Okay. All right, I'll turn the hearing over to Mr. Rigby.
Ms. Bennie, basically answered all the questions I was gonna ask you. Steve, those plans, we'll review them and we'll just take a quick look before we move the application, but I mean, what you're saying sounds good. With the condition also with the decks not to be enclosed, which you agreed to.
Yes.
Chairman, I got no further questions. One more thing, I apologize. With the DEC memos, Kelly, did you, did you happen to read those?
Let me see, I don't know if I got a DEC memo. Let me hang on one second.
The, obviously the first floor not to be habitable space.
Oh, yes, we, oh, we're, yes, that's being abandoned, that first floor, we're, we're all in compliance with that, that first floor is gonna be abandoned with the raise.
Very good. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna close the hearing, reserve decision, we're gonna hold the record open for one week, you get the decision in the mail, thanks.
Thank you.
You are with us on the next one, Sessom?
I am.
So, for the record, you are still swans, we'll just stay with that, okay? For the record, we have a planning memo dated May 10th, 2021. A planning memo from Matt Esposito to Kate Shreve with some comments here. Must provide signed and sealed plans, must provide elevation drawings of all four sides of the building. And also this exceeds the maximum allowable height, which is one of the variances that you're asking for. There is survey by Lawrence Michael Haines dated January 24th, 2020, which shows a number of sheds being eliminated from this property. That same survey without the shed, without taking the sheds off, but showing tax map acting as an area map and.
And four photographs, Mr. Chairman, as well as a plot plan and floor plans by Emmanuel Tenady dated March 1st, 2021.
Would you like to tell us about the application?
Well, basically, right now, this is currently a very small, one-story existing residence built in 1946 on a lot. The lot size is 12,414 square feet and it's in EB business zone. Basically, this applicant actually had been before you guys, some years back, with, with just the proposal of the oversized detached garage. So now, two extra children later and another on the way, they are in absolute need of additional living space. So they're really trying to design, you know, their dream home for their very large and growing family. The height variance really comes into play. We, our goal is to keep a nine-foot or to request and get a nine-foot ceiling height on the first floor and eight-foot ceiling heights on the second floor. In terms of any type of attic space, the homeowner has absolutely zero interest with using any type of attic for storage. It would just be very minimal for ductwork, air handlers and the HVAC. So, so there's really no intention to ever finish any attic space or anything like that. So the height really comes into play because of, you know, the higher ceiling heights. And that's, the request there is really for a lot of architectural detail, we're doing some archways, barrel vaulted ceilings. And it's really, again, it's, it's what they want, so we're asking for it. The garage bays, obviously, we are, you know, in excess of what is permitted for a private garage. So Mr. Sansone actually has a operating public garage in full compliance within the town of Babylon since 1993. So his intention is not to utilize the garages at his residence to, the last thing he'd probably wanna do would be any additional auto body or repair work. So he has a classic car, three additional cars for the family, a boat, an RV, motorcycles, snowmobiles. And as you guys can see, the property with the seven sheds and quite a lot of things, boats visible when you pass by, if you guys did your drive-by. So we're looking to really clean that up, eliminate all seven sheds. If we eliminate the seven sheds, it comes out to, I believe it was like 242, you know, square feet. So it really is to get the family what they need, you know, and for their lifestyle and their toys. The detached garage would always remain unfinished, the owner is fine to commit to that detached garage never being finished or converted to living space. And then we have some minor area variances, we are encroaching on the front yard for the portico only. We're keeping in line with the existing dwelling. And basically, that's it, they're really, they don't wanna leave West Babylon, they love West Babylon. And they've been waiting a very long time to do this, so we were, you know, very excited that the projects finally come to fruition. And again, it is an E-business zone across the street, is a, you know, a C-zone, so that area is a little bit unique. They do have a very large commercial building next to them, the niche, which is, you know, an apartment complex, a commercial building behind them. So they're trying to, you know, block out, you know, all of that and just get their dream family home, really.
Okay.
All right, I did take a drive-by, and this space is extremely interesting.
Yes.
Because it is such a small house on a large property, surrounded by businesses.
Yes.
So it looks really interesting.
Yes.
And you're very specific on what the dream is now, and it's totally different than what is there.
Yeah, him and his wife have lived in this house, like I said, it's 800 square feet, so you can imagine they're
Yeah.
growing family in a one-bedroom house. And, you know, the garage was, you know, Mickey's a, a car guy and a sports enthusiast, so the garage was really more of his dream until we realized that the family really needed, you know, a big, beautiful home, and they're a really big family, so you figure any given family dinner, they're probably at 12 at a minimum, you know, so they're really just looking for their dream home. That rear home office also in the back of the garage is really, you know, he works on cars all day, likes to just come in and kind of have a little space for himself before he goes to see his family kind of thing, so it's not, it's nothing other than a little man cave back there, not anything specific. And it is interesting, because like you said, the lot's super big and it, it's not a non-conforming lot, because it was built in 46.
Right.
But it is a very small house.
It is. So the idled vehicles that are not being used, they're just normally being parked on the property?
Yeah, there's, you know, they do have a driveway in the front and an existing second driveway on that side street.
So now you just want to have a garage so you can store them inside?
Well, exactly. So basically, we're proposing an oversized internal garage. And that's really for wife and family use, you know, when Mrs. Sansone gets home, that's really her space. And for regular things like your lawnmower, what anyone would.
Right, right, right.
And then that detached garage is really to eliminate probably what you know, when you drove by, was that there's a lot of things. You know, it doesn't look its neatest and it would be ideal for him to keep his, you know, pride and joys in a safe space, which would
Unbelievable.
A detached two-car, so that, you know, just a two-car or just a one-car really doesn't work for the family.
Okay, did you guys read the planning memo?
Yes, we did.
Because they have some concerns about this garage.
Yes. And I mean, my only, the only thing that I could offer up after what I've shared is that, like I said, the, the homeowners are completely fine to put any type of covenant and restriction, that that detached garage would never be converted to living space. Obviously, they'd need electric, because they would need to
Right.
be around, but they would never seek to convert that to any type of living space.
It's a compromise, we'll consider it. I have no further questions.
Okay, I do. The height.
Yes.
You brought the last application down three inches.
Well, I was hoping that would, that would maybe make up for case number six. That was a very easy roof pitch change. And like I shared with you, you know, the, you know, the homeowner, his, his envision was probably 10 or 12 foot ceiling heights in the first floor. So, you know, I got, I talked him down to nine foot, which, which is really lovely, you know, when you have it and eight foot on the second floor is nice. And like I say, we have a lot of different architectural elements and archways or vaulted ceilings that we're doing. So the height comes into play because of the higher ceiling heights. We can't, if it was a new house, I'd offer to, you know, drop it lower, but I, you know, we can't, because we're using the existing foundation.
Well, the 33, the three foot on the height is gonna be a problem.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to do something with that, because we've taken a pretty hard stance on 30-foot houses. And we don't wanna start setting the precedent, you know, especially in the areas where they're raising houses. I know this is not that area, but, you know, we've stuck to this 30 very, very hard over the years here since the Sandy thing.
And that, we totally understand and, you know, respect, obviously, the, you know, the consideration there being that it is more of a unique area, that it is the EB business. We're not seeking to exceed the 35, it's not for any type of third story or any finished attic space. But, you know, we will, we will look at what options, you know, we may have. It's, we worked on the roofline quite a bit. And, and this was really, we figured we'd ask for, you know, what the homeowner would like and just kind of take it from there.
Okay, so you understand our concerns?
I understand the concerns 100%, and I've done a lot of, you know, different driving around in the neighborhood. Obviously, it's hard unless you have the time to foil or see the documents, because some houses, depending on the grade elevation, but there's quite a few large, very beautiful, they're all beautiful, but you figure Tucker Avenue, Old Farmingdale Road, there's a ton of things outside of the house raises, you know, that have gone up that I feel are very much in character with what, you know, we're proposing.
Yeah, and that, well, and some of those might have been pre-coded, because that was put in, you know, after Sandy there, you know, keep it to 30. So, you know, this, I have concerns and the board I know will have concerns with the 33. And like I said, the last one was only three inches and there was concerns with that, and certainly the planning department has concerns, so, you know.
Yeah, and that again, that was, that one again, was what you're referring to before, was a house raise at three, you know, foot above.
Yeah, I mean, it was an easy fix, but, you know, this one is, you know, it's not there already, so how can it be fixed? How can we fix the height variance on this?
Well, we will, you know, we will go back to the homeowner and the architect and, you know, see where we can go. We just figured we had to start somewhere and I figured the right place to start would be asking for what, you know, ultimately what they want, you know?
Okay, understood. I'm, you know, just, I'm expressing the concern, so I just want, you know.
Completely understood.
Okay, enough said. Any other questions from the board? Do we have anybody on this one, Brian?
Uh, yeah, I did have someone registered, let me see if he wants to speak. Ed, you have any, do you have any questions, concerns?
Uh, yeah, just one quick one. Is, do I understand? Do I understand that the EB use is gone, if this is granted and it will be treated henceforth under the C-zone, the residential C-zone?
No, we're not changing the zone on this.
No, like, like I was sharing earlier, so the, the property itself, it's not non-conforming, so it wasn't built prior to 31. So it is an EB business zone right now.
Right.
As a residence built in 1946, which is, you know, after 31, which would make it non-conforming. So it is not non-conforming, so it is in a business EB zone.
Okay.
I just, my, my question is that, I'm sorry.
I just need your name and address for one second, just give me.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm Edward Young. I'm counsel to the niche, which is next door, the apartment complex. My offices are 112 Route 109, West Babylon, New York, and we've operated in the town of Babylon for almost 50 years.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, I'm sorry, I didn't give that upfront. My, my real question is, is the, first of all, the house is beautiful and we're, it's great and the whole idea, obviously the height and all that, you folks can deal with. And we applaud the Sanstones for. Um, and we, we applaud the sandstones for, you know, looking to put this improvement in place in spirit. Um, but, uh, the sandstones may or may not be there forever. Nothing is. And, um, if they C and R, if they covenant or something now that, uh, this is a single-family residence and remain as such. Um, we avoid in the future, the idea that residential use in the commercial zone is not permitted in my, if I, as I underread, as I read the code. So yes, they're, they've been there for a long time and they're expanding the residence and that's great. Um, but I, I don't think the other uses would particularly with a larger, beautiful home there be at all consistent and usable in the town. So I wonder if the idea of not having the commercial uses, uh, used would be something that the board and the applicant might, uh, consider. Um, especially with the large proposed garage. I, I don't know if, uh, vice chairman, uh, uh, would, you know, would know more, certainly not would, but he does know a lot more about it than me for sure. But if, i- is that proposed garage very amenable to a commercial use as a repair shop, for example? Is enough height under the ceiling and all that?
I mean, Mr. Young, just to, we're not seeking any type of change of, um, of zone whatsoever. You know, that's not what brought us here. And I know that, um, this sandstones, you know, we do, uh, they live extremely close to the niche next door. So, and they're very friendly with all the people that live in there. They have a great relationship and they really do want to stay right next door. Um, from my understanding, um, it, because it's not non-conforming, it is a business EB zone. I mean, the homeowner does get offers, people want to buy his property all the time to, you know, perhaps put up something else or another version of the niche or something. So our intention is not seeking to change the, the zone or ask for any change whatsoever.
Yeah. Wondering if we can't address the use. I think we're all saying the same thing. This would be a wonderful blockade, a, a finishing point on that odd corner. That it will be not, you know, if the niche could move over there, I'd love to do it, but the niche isn't moving over there and it's your property. Um, but I'm more concerned about all those other uses in the EB business zone. And we all looked down and then we say, oh, those would be horrible, looking across at the residences across the street next door. And obviously the people who live at the niche are looking for a residential experience, not a business one. So it just seems like, um, maybe it's time to C and R that this is going to be in conformance with the residential C requirements and not be used in the future for the EB. It's kind of a way to do the change of zone, uh, just by C and R. Just, I'm just throwing that out there. That's, that's my concern.
C and R is just to, to make sure that the structure is not used as, as commercial use or for repairs or anything like that. Um, if we were to approve that, um, I think that should be entered in, entered into the, uh, CO for covenants and restrictions. That's my, just a suggestion.
And I do think it's probably worth, um, a little bit more, perhaps, you know, like a, a review from a town attorney or, you know, something. I bring up the EB business zone and that's kind of where we took a stance on just kind of following, even with, you know, asking for the additional, you know, height, um, being that it is in that zone. So the, our intention was to never, um, you know, change the, the future of that corner or the zone itself. But really more of just to say, hey, we, you know, we're in compliance. If we went by EB zone, then we're under our thirty-five foot height max. Um, and I, I do think it's great that Mr. Young's on the call tonight and, um, because it is interesting that that complex is so close to the house, you know? It, it is unique.
Okay. Um, we'll look into that and, and, you know, take, take a look at that and see, you know, is that, that's something we want to do. Would he agree to a, a, a condition, uh, actually a covenant restriction that the garage not be used for commercial use?
Yes, a covenant and restriction or a condition that the garage not be, I, I don't think that the homeowner himself wants to restrict, you know, like Mr. Young is saying, perhaps the future of a, a different person coming in or a different option at that corner. But they would agree to the condition that the garage not be, um, finished for living space or used in any type of commercial way for sure.
Okay.
That, that's not the intention with the garage. Anybody that's drive past the property, you guys would see in two seconds. There's definitely a lot of, um, you know, items between the boats, the RVs and all the things I mentioned. Um, so that, that's the only intention for the garage.
Okay. Mr. Young, anything else?
No, thank you. And, and it's a, a wonderful improvement in, again, theory. It's a nice house and I wish the sandstones luck with it and, and that it, uh, they live there many years happily.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Okay. Um, nobody else, Brian, or is that it?
Okay. That's it.
All right. So we're going to close the hearing. We're going to reserve decision. We're going to keep the record open for one week. Uh, if you need more than the one week, Kelly, uh, you know, get in touch with the zoning board, you know, send us a letter or, you know, whatever you need to do.
I appreciate that and thank you all so much for your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, I have, uh, Roy and Michael Canetti and Stephen Creutz for, uh, application number seven.
Just, did you, do we have Richard Hicks back?
Oh, we do. We do. I can bring in Tim Jordan if you guys would like.
Yeah, that's fine.
Finish the residentials before we move on.
Yeah, I, I agree. Let's finish the residential. Hey, Tim, you there?
You're muted. Okay.
There you go.
Now?
Yes.
I need, I need your name and address for the record.
Uh, Tim Jordan, Nine Flamingo Drive, Smithtown, New York, one one seven eight seven.
And you affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
For the record, we have a planning division memo dated May tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. A survey by Lhasa Lisa Land Surveying. Okay. Uh, dated August fourteenth, twenty seventeen, tax map acting as an area map and?
Seven photographs, Mr. Chairman, as well as a set of floor plans and plot plan dated January sixth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Would you like to tell us about the application?
Yes, I, uh, so I'm, I'm representing, um, Carlia McCullough. They would like to, uh, propose a second story addition for, uh, uh, when it comes down to it, it'll only be an additional bedroom, but it'll give them some room on the, uh, on the first floor to open up and she can have a proper dining room. Um, as you can see, uh, by, by the plot plan, she is staying within the envelope of, of the, the, the building as it stands, uh, with the, without, uh, going over the garage. Um, it's, there's no, there's no encroachment to what's already existing there and as far as what has been CO'd. Um, there was a variance, uh, very similar to it directly across the street, uh, the diagonal gag stutters that I believe I, I spoke with this board on, um, last summer. Uh, same situation. They weren't encroaching on their, their current setbacks that were established. And yet we still wound up, uh, coming before the board. Um, with, with that said, you know, obviously the practical difficulties of if they were to kick these in, uh, to grab the five feet off the front or the, you know, point six feet off of the side yard, uh, would take it off the foundation and create the structural issues that would have to be addressed.
Okay. So you're just going straight up over the current?
Minus the garage. Yes.
Minus the garage. Right. Okay. Okay. I have no further questions. Any other questions from the board? Nobody's on this, right, Brian?
No.
Okay. All right. So we're going to close the hearing. We're going to reserve decision. We will keep the record open for one week for any further comments from anybody. And you'll get the decision in the mail.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks.
All right. I'm going to bring in, uh, Michael and Roy Canetti and Stephen Creutz.
Okay. Mr. Creutz. You're on mute now. Okay, now you're off.
There we go.
All right. Need your name and address for the record.
Yes, Stephen Creutz, Dunne U. Creutz and Gare, Brandt, six ninety-two South Wellwood Avenue, Lindenhurst, New York.
Hey, and the other two gentlemen, are they going to speak or?
Uh, probably not unless there's a question that we can handle. Um, okay.
I'll swear I'm in then if we have to. So that's, that's.
Okay. This is, sorry, go ahead.
For the record, we have a planning division memo dated May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one. A site plan, I believe this is, that is undated by Eugene Kemphi. A tax map acting as an area map, a survey by Frank Wood, last dated June third, two thousand and seventeen. And?
And, uh, six photographs.
Would you like to tell us about the application?
This, um, this property has been in the Canetti family now for several years. Um, it, this approval was first granted in two thousand and nine and it has been operating, uh, as such ever since. Uh, the, and we seek a renewal, uh, much along the lines of the prior removal, renewals that we've received. There's very little that has changed. Uh, the Canettis also own the, um, car thing to the northeast corner of it. But that's a separate business than the, uh, the supply yard. Um, and we think it's been going very well. There is a, a very nice, uh, apartment complex that was done by Bob Curcio to the west of this yard. Um, and they cooperated with each other and have continued to do that, um, ever since to, um, and it's worked out very well. The apartments are doing very well and the yard continues to operate cleanly and efficiently. Uh, it's, it was first approved, as I said, I think in two thousand and nine, and we're seeking to continue that. That's it.
Okay. Next, I'll turn the hearing over to Ms. McCullough.
Okay. Um, I believe the, um, permit was, it had expired in twenty twenty, yes? You had a three-year renewal for, um, in twenty seventeen?
It could be that that happened in, perhaps in the midst of what has gone on in the country. Um, we have been trying to get back in for quite some time, but that's also been a little bit of a challenge because of the way everything is, is running. Pam Green and I are on the phone a lot trying to figure out where we stand and what I can expect. And, uh, but they've always had the intention of doing this. It's just not been an easy time to do it.
Understandable. Um, I just want to make sure you're aware that because you're so close to residential area, we are expecting you to be even more cognizant of the land use.
Yes, ma'am. The, um, another client of mine, Mr. Curcio, who has the apartments to the west, also built as, um, a project to the south. And it, it all went really very well in the end. Um, and there have been, I, I think there's been a lot of calmness and, uh, cooperation going on there. So we'll be sure they know that.
All right. I have no further questions.
Any other questions from the board? Nobody on this, right, Brian? No. Okay. All right. We're going to close the hearing. We're going to reserve decision. We'll keep the record open for one week for further comments and you'll get the decision in the mail. Thanks.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a nice evening.
You too.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, ma'am.
All right. And I'm going to bring in Mark and Ralph for application number eight. So I just don't want to kick out the wrong person here. Perfect. There we go. There, Mark.
Can you hear me?
Yep. There we go. Yep. You're good.
Hold on one second here. Get my video going. Okay.
All right. Need your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Mark Calata, Key Civil Engineering, six six four Blue Point Road, Holtsville, New York.
Okay. And Ralph, are you going to be speaking? He's on mute. Okay. Do you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
For the record, we have planning division memo dated May tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. A site plan that is unstamped, but it is dated one four twenty-one. A survey by Michael Scalist dated eight three twenty, tax map acting as an area map and?
And three photographs, Mr. Chairman, as well as, I think you already mentioned it, but a site plan. I, I have a stamped copy, um, dated, uh, one four twenty-one.
Okay. Very good. Would you like to tell us about the application?
Oh, yeah. I just, uh, private starting, uh, I, I, there should be a revision to three twenty-two twenty-one.
Yep. Sorry about that. Three twenty-two. I do have it. Sorry, Mark.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, we're here tonight to seek a parking variance for an existing lot. Uh, the existing lot is, uh, located at three ninety-three Sunrise Highway in West Babylon. Um, there's an existing two-story building there, uh, that was built approximately nineteen seventy-five and has been historically used as an office building. The two-story building is located on the north side, I'm sorry, the south side of the property. And there is an accessory parking lot on the north side. Um, there are no proposed changes to the existing footprint. Uh, the building is proposed to be totally renovated from the inside and out, facade renovation. Um, the applicant is also proposing to renovate the existing parking lot, uh, which will include new asphalt, curbing, lighting, landscaping. And once completed, that parking lot will, uh, have contained forty-nine parking stalls, um, which is what the existing parking lot actually is today. Uh, I'd also like to note that, um, the applicant is, has agreed to replace all the sidewalks along Forest Avenue and Sand Street as was requested by the town DPW. Um, the parking lot capacity has basically been, um, maximized, uh, at this location. We've worked with planning to sort of, uh, meet all the dimensional requirements for, uh, the current code. Um, and we basically wound up with forty-nine stalls. Uh, the variance we're requesting is a forty-two stall variance, ninety-one stalls are required per code. And we're providing forty-nine. So that's a forty-two, uh, parking stall variance. Um, I, I don't know if I mentioned the, in the renovation, it will be a medical use, uh, and not just offices, it'll be medical use, um, for a total of, uh, eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty square feet. Um, to support this request, uh, we submit to the board, uh, a ITE calculation using Institute of Traffic Engineers, uh, fifth generation, uh, Parking Generation Manual fit addition, uh, that the peak demand, um, for, uh, this medical use and this amount of square footage would be thirty-eight stalls. That's the average weekday average peak parking demand. Based on this projection, uh, the proposed forty-nine stalls will be eleven more than what is estimated by ITE manuals. Uh, additionally, uh, I've spoken with the applicant, um, who is, uh, one of the, uh, doctors at the practice. And he has informed me that they will, that typically, a typical day, he sees about fifty patients in a day. Uh, this is over a nine-hour period, uh, between eight AM and five PM. Um, the, uh, he also stated that the average time a patient spends at the office is sixty minutes. So it's for these reasons, we believe that the, the amount of parking provided, uh, will be sufficient for the practice as well as, uh, we are in a hardship situation where everything is pretty much existing and there isn't any room to further provide parking. At this time, I, I welcome any questions the board may have.
Okay. Turn the hearing over to Ms. McCullough. Your night.
I know. I know. Okay. Um, it sounds like you're Okay, um, it sounds like you're attempting to expand the business, but diminish parking. So we're?
No, it's an existing two-story building.
Mm-hmm.
And we're just renovating it from office to medical.
Okay.
There's an existing parking lot. In fact, if I could share my screen, that would probably maybe help you see it a little better. Okay, tell me when you can see my screen there.
Yep.
Got it. Got it.
Okay, that is the survey.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, this is the existing building here. This is the existing parking lot, which has 49 stalls. They don't really comply with, uh, town dimensional requirements, um, but it, you could physically park 49 stalls. This is the proposed lot. So it complies dimensionally with all of the town requirements. You can see, we just have a, a small buffer on this, on the street frontages. So it's basically more or less going back, uh, with the same number of stalls, but in compliance with all the town dimensional requirements. Does that?
Yes, that's, that makes it a little more clear. So when it was just office space, it was just workers occupying the office space coming in and out, correct?
Correct.
Now it's going to be patients and doctors or dentists or whoever.
Yes, and, yes, and they have different parking demands.
And the study that you are submitting, or you have already done, you're saying shows?
I'm saying, per ITE, uh, manuals, the average parking, peak parking demand will be 38 stalls.
Where was the study taken? Why, where, I, where's this information coming?
My office performed it. We used, uh, transportation, uh, manuals to generate that number. Basically, there are studies that are done in the ITE manual and you, they give you calculations that you can calculate the, the, um, average demand of a medical office use. It goes by use.
Okay.
The, the manual has, you know, medical, medical office, it has regular office, it has supermarkets, it has gas stations, it has every land use you could think of, for the most part.
Just let me interrupt for a second, Tony. So, so does that manual take into consideration where this parking is? You know, as far as on Long Island in the city, you know, upstate New York, you know, that kind of thing?
The, the studies are done, um, throughout the US, so, um, it's, it's not strictly Long Island.
It's not strictly Long Island, I guess that was my question.
But it is, it, the ITE manual is the industry standard of, for projecting parking, trip demands, things like that.
Okay. I'm sorry, Tony.
No, that was good. I, that's what I was, I was trying to get that, okay. Um, I have no further questions.
I, I just have, like, how many employees, you know, employees?
We 10 to 12.
Nurses, whatever, reception?
10 to 12 employees, two doctors, and in that, in that 10 to 12 employees includes the two doctors.
So?
Those are included on the site plan, uh, that the, the town code requires one space per employee, so it is calculated.
It's calculated into that. So in other words, then we're taking 10 spaces away from that 49 spaces and it's really 30.
Correct, so, well, but the ITE manual, the 38 stalls that are required accounts for employees.
Okay.
So in other words, when they perform these studies, they're, they're actually going to an office or medical office and counting the cars, so the employees are there. So that is included in the projections.
Okay, so how many doctors will be in, in the building?
Two doctors.
Two doctors? Okay. All right, um, I have no other question. Any other questions from the board? Tony, do you have anything else? I'm sorry, Ms. McCullough, you have anything else?
Good to go.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, there's nobody on this one, right, Brian?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Sure.
What kind of practice is this that is only 16-minute visits?
It's a cardiologist.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, we're going to close the hearing. We're going to reserve decision. We're going to keep the record open for one week and you get the decision in the mail.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on with the remainder of the agenda. The first item is, uh, application 19 dash, um, 078, William Zito. The request is for first, second, third, and fourth extension of time.
Where's he been?
I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, uh, approve this extension.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Moving on to page seven of the agenda is an extension of time for application 20 dash, 13, 130A and 130B. Um, but while the board is considering the extension of time, I would just like to ask you to also look at correspondence number 12. This is carryover correspondence from Nicole Blanda. It was on the last agenda. It's requesting the board recall the application and delete covenant and restriction number four and five for lot one. So just as a refresher, this property is located in Amityville. It's on the northwest corner of Cedar Road and East Street. It was a proposed subdivision. There was an existing home on lot one. This is, uh, Stanley Gilpin.
Uh, can I jump in for a sec? I, I think, uh, she submitted this, but this might be a little premature. I spoke to her on this after she submitted that, uh, correspondence and there's a discrepancy because it's not a second-story deck. It's actually an addition that, uh, should have been legalized. So I, I don't feel conf- you know, my recommendation would be to not make a move on this just yet, uh, because they need to kind of figure out what they're doing with the deck that has been converted to, uh, essentially living space.
So is she sending an updated letter then to?
Yeah, she, she hasn't basically, um, I advised her that the stairs should be removed, as per the covenants, um, and that the second-story deck that they have a CO4 from 66 or something like that, it's no longer a second-story deck. It's, uh, it's enclosed from above and below. Uh, it's essentially a, a rear addition. Um, we approved it with proper setbacks and everything, but that portion of the lot, since they bought it from the county, doesn't seem to have a, a valid, uh, that portion of the dwelling is sealed for a deck and it is definitely not a deck at this point. Um, so I wouldn't, I would advise holding on, on any changes on this one for another week or two.
Okay, how do we feel about the extension of time?
Next question. I think we have a problem with the extension of time.
I have no problem with the extension of time. And we will regardless have to change the, um, it's, I ran, oh no, no, she just did four and five on this one. Planning board actually had no high ranch CNR, but it was a, it is a high ranch, so.
It is a high ranch.
It is a high ranch, so that's, that one we will have to change, but that's with the planning board. Um, four and five, I don't think are necessarily valid and we might not have to change anything at this point.
So I, I make a motion for an extension of time on application, uh, 21, 130A.
And B.
And B.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, no, we'll take the rest of this up.
Yeah, I'll follow up with them again tomorrow.
Thank you. Um, moving on to page eight, we have the two applications that are adjourned until next week. Ronald and Catherine Brust and PMP Motors. Moving on to page nine, we also have, um, Novak Motors continuing to, uh, hold for an updated explanation from Brian Sensabaugh. Anything on that, Brian?
Uh, yes, we spoke with, me and Matt both spoke with, uh, Brian. Um, essentially, they have to change, uh, you know, kind of their site plan. What they were proposing as staging and stuff like that, uh, we need to see on paper. So they need to get us an updated operational plan, which is going to start with the planning board. Um, and then it will come to us for the variances. Um, so essentially their outdoor storage will expand. And they are going to remove, it sounds like the owner bought the, the property that was in conflict last, last, when we actually had that hearing. And we need to, we told him to get all of those cars off of that site, since they are not approved for such. Um, and then if they're going to be stored at Daniel Street or 215 Daniel Street, the plans will have to be revised, um, which will start at planning board, since it was a planning board application. You know, they'll have to work on that and then come back to us. So I don't know if we want to, you know, whatever we want to do with this, it, it will be a little bit. A little bit, meaning, meaning at least a month or two.
So is this something, so this is going to be a new site plan, a new, will new variances be required and stuff like?
Yeah, I think they're, they're going to have to reapply. So I don't know if you want to just table this or should we request that they were withdrawing, draw it at this point?
I think we should just withdraw, right?
So it's beyond applying, but they've already requested. So another, it's beyond modification of what's already been advertised.
Yeah.
So they should withdraw it.
They should withdraw.
It's, it's, it's going to significantly increase the required parking, um, and realistically take away what's, what's there. Um, they need the room in the back. Uh, it seems to be an orderly operation, but they are a large site. Um, seems like they have, you know, parking in the front, they kind of have it split, but what they were showing us is not exactly how it operates, so they need.
I need to reach out to Brian to ask him to submit a letter to withdraw, since he needs to readvertise.
Yeah, and it's going to start at planning board first, so they've got a, they're modifying those plans now and they haven't submitted them, so it's not like it's happening anytime.
Yeah, it's, it's not going to get those too quick, so that's, that's it. They, they need to withdraw any or something.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, the application of John Forgione, I understand he reached out to the building department and wanted, um, a building inspector to come to the home to verify that the converted garage into a gym was not living space, but the response is it's still not a garage. So he is still going to have to move forward with either legalizing the garage conversion or converting it back to a garage.
With that being a second front door too?
That's what we need to find out. So that continues to be held as well. Moving on to De Silva Automotive, that's also hold, being held for pending modified site plan, correct?
Yeah, we're still working on it. Essentially, they didn't have a real site plan to start with, so, you know, we're kind of going through the motions.
Okay, moving on to the bottom of page 10, we have application 21 dash, 004, Stickley Furniture. So there was an updated memo, uh, from the sign inspector received, um, after the close, that the agenda was closed. So we will go through those changes with you, Mr. Chairman, I believe it's on your agenda. The proposal is to delete the second variance, diminish distance to front lot line from 10 to 4.5. Delete variance number four, increase monument sign height from six to nine. Change the wording from monument to pylon sign. So if the board is comfortable making those changes, they would approve the application as amended.
And if the board needs to review this, if they don't have both changes in front of them, I can screen share. I have both the monument and the proposed pylon, uh, up here on the computer, if you want me to screen share.
Anybody need to see that or are we good?
Okay with this.
Yeah, I think, I think our problem was the monument and the, and the sightlines and stuff with this, so I think the pylon's going to be fine there, so.
Yeah.
I'm, I'll make a motion to approve application 21, 004 as amended for a period of five years.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Moving on to page 11. The application is 21 dash, 034. It's located in Kopeg. Suffolk County Planning Memo has been received on this, so the board is okay to move. Planning had recommended a condition that the decks not be further enclosed and subject to DEC conditions.
I make a motion to approve application 21 dash, 034 with the condition that the decks not be further enclosed and all DEC conditions.
Second.
All favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. The bottom of page 11, the application is 21 dash, 033. We are still waiting for new plans for this property. Moving on to page 12, the agenda, the application is 21 dash, 045. It's located in West Babylon. Um, you are okay to move. Planning had recommended the condition not to further enclose the front porch, and if the shed is ever moved, it's relocated to a conforming location.
Okay, I make a motion to approve application number 21 dash, 045 with the, the conditions listed on the planning memo.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
The bottom of page 12 is application 21 dash, 041, Brian Miller. Um, the board can move, planning has no objection, and this is located in North Amityville.
I make a motion that we approve application, Mr. Chairman, on 21 dash, 041.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Page 13 of the agenda, the application is 21 dash, 043. It's located in North Babylon. Uh, it is okay to move if the board is satisfied that the applicant presented an, or a compelling argument to justify the large encroachment to the rear yard.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve application 21 dash, 043.
Second.
Second.
All favor?
All right. The bottom of page 13 is application 21 dash, 042. This is located in North Babylon. Excuse me, the board can move, there are no objections from planning.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve application 21 dash, 042.
Second.
All favor?
Aye. Aye.
Page four to the agenda, excuse me, the application is 21 dash, 040, located in Deer Park. The board is okay to move, planning has no objections.
The chairman to make a motion to approve application number 21 dash, 040.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Bottom of page 14 has application 21 dash, 044, located in West Babylon. The board can move, planning had recommended a condition, the decks not be further enclosed.
Make a motion to approve application number 21 dash, 044 with a condition that the decks not be further enclosed.
Second.
All favor?
Aye. Aye.
Moving on to page 15 and 16, we're continuing to hold the Dingle Bay, um, applications as, uh, the developer will be submitting new plans for, um, the house proposed on lot number one. However, there are a number of pieces of correspondence in the board's packet. Please see items one through five for, um, emails from residences opposing the application. Which brings you to your correspondence page. You have correspondence for today's meeting regarding Dingle Bay. Memo from Suffolk County Planning, the revised plans from Stickley Furniture. A notice from the Village of Babylon of two proposed applications located within 500 feet of the town of Bab- from the town of Babylon. You have a notice from the town of Huntington that there is a proposed code change requiring screening for structures on rooftops. There's carryover correspondence from the last hearing. The letter from the resident in Kopeg regarding Gale Grace Estates, Diane Hawkshurst. Uh, the letter from, uh, Nicole Blanda regarding the Stanley Gilpin application. And you continue to have carryover correspondence from April 22nd. The first is the letter from the Kopeg resident, Diane Hawkshurst, and the other two were for applications that are going to be heard on May 20th. And for your review, we have the minutes of April 29th. And that includes your agenda for tonight.
So we can read, read and file the ones, uh, in regards to Gale Grace, both of those. Uh, the board wanted to look into them a little bit more as far as the letters go and, uh, we did. It's about to start at this point, so those, those can be read and filed.
Thank you.
That's it?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, wait, before you adjourn, just let me, I got. So? so, uh, as far as these ROAs with the, you know, record of attendance.
Chairman, did you want this to be part of the, did you want to adjourn, though?
Yeah, well, yeah, let's adjourn, I'm sorry. You were right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.